...the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for multiple seconds.
Thank you very much. Please shut cell phones down to stun or vibrate. And item number one, do we have any citizen concerns that anyone would like to address that is not already on the agenda? Item two, approval of the agenda.
I move approval, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five to zero. Items three through six constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Items pass unanimously unless a separate vote is requested by a board member. Three is approval of the minutes of the November two meeting. Four, approval of claims. Five, juvenile detention. Receive the juvenile detention October population report. Six, human resources. A, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions. B, authorization to initiate hiring process. And is there any questions on the consent agenda?
I'll move the consent agenda.
Motion by Raddick, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five to zero. What do we got time for, Mr. Gill? Should we? Item eight, canvas for regular city slash school election.
Hello, Steve Hofmeyer with the auditor's office. I have canvas for the city school election here for you guys to look at and sign off on, along with the abstracts of votes and the winner certificates for you guys to all sign off on.
Okay.
There were two after-election absentee ballots that came through which were rejected because they came through too late. They had to be here by eight o'clock on election night. And there were thirteen provisional ballots from the, on election day. Two of those were rejected. One of them was because the person did not provide photo ID. And the other one, the person voted in the wrong polling place, so.
Okay. I'll move to receive the canvas. Motion by DeWitt, second by Al. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five to zero. Okay. Yeah. Well, we'll start.
Any color will do?
I think so. Do you think we're close enough to our set time, Mr. Gill?
Yes, sir.
We're at a set time of four thirty-five for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into an amended and substituted lease agreement with the Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority. That's going to be Mr. Butler.
Okay, this is the hearing to have either for or against. Are any comments on the amendment to the lease by the public?
We're in open or public hearing.
Hearing non, Mr. Chair. I move that the public hearing be closed.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five to zero. Item B, approval of resolution approving and authorizing an amended and substituted lease agreement between Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority and Woodbury County, Iowa.
In this amended lease, basically what we're doing is we're changing the dates to the current dates, the actual dates, because we have sold our second set of bonds. We will be closing November seventeenth and receiving the money November seventeenth. And also changed, got the, instead of estimated principal and interest, now we know exactly what it is. So that's approving, you know, change that in the lease agreement.
I move approval of resolution approving and authorizing an amended and substituted lease agreement between Woodbury County Law Enforcement Center Authority and Woodbury County.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Raddick to approve the resolution. Any further questions for Mr. Butler? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five to zero. Item C, approval of resolution amending the resolution number thirteen thousand zero seventy, levying a direct annual tax for payment of the base rent and additional rent due under the lease agreement by and between Woodbury County LEC Authority and Woodbury County pursuant to section three forty-six dot twenty-seven of code of Iowa.
Okay, on this, we do have the exact amounts again for principal and interest on both our bond issues. Also, we are adding on four hundred thousand per year for the next nineteen years, which is in regards to the additional rent payment, which is section seven point two. That money there, first, the money for the bonds and interest, our lease payment will go into bond and interest fund, so they pay their bonds. Second, this maintenance of four hundred thousand a year will deposit in a separate fund because there are separate stipulations where they have to pay it for certain items. Then, that's different than a maintenance item, which is another twenty percent on federal, any kind of federal printers, ice printers, whatever, we get twenty percent goes in another maintenance fund for specific purposes. So this is a little different. This year, all I levied was a principal and interest. I did not realize that we could levy the four hundred thousand as a tax in our debt service. In the future years, it will be starting twenty-two, twenty-three. For twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, I'll have to come back probably next week with a resolution to transfer four, two hundred thousand on November first, two hundred thousand on November, or May first, to be deposited in a maintenance fund under this additional rent item that's kept in a separate fund by the authority. So that money, I'll have where it comes out general basic. Our reserves are good enough that we can withstand that. Because we also have seven hundred and seventeen thousand. Eventually, we have to send over to authority that we agreed to for site preparation, certified testing, several items there, and getting the site ready for the jail. We already agreed to that. So I will be coming back next week for the two hundred and two hundred for this fiscal year. Future years, it's going to be levied to the tax instead of coming out of our general basic fund. And the reason for that, my feelings on it, is that it's better to pay our debt service because that's not in our two percent cap. Because when we go over two percent, you've got other problems. You know, if you go to three, four, whatever the percent is on our tax increase. So for this year, we did not levy the tax for it, but in future years, we will be. And that's what this resolution here is for, to have a direct tax.
And this is something that was anticipated, that would be moved as an agenda item long ago. Is that correct?
Yes. And this, now that we have all the bonds sold, we know the exact amounts we have to levy each year. And like I say, these numbers here, hopefully, will be all set down the road with revenue from prisoners. That's our goal, and that's what we.
From what?
The tax levy, when we levy the tax, if we have, say, a million dollars come in, it's eighty percent, we'll take that off the tax levy for the next year. And you'll know that, too. You'll have to know, because you're going to levy the tax.
Okay.
Our goal is to get enough prisoners down the road. Hopefully, they'll delete the tax. But we got to get them there first. And the sheriff's office working diligently in pursuing that avenue.
I'll move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Motion by DeWitt, second by Raddick. Further question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five to zero. Item D, discussion and action to either extend the current lease for one year or bid out the county farm for one year crop season twenty twenty-two.
Okay, in this case here, the person that's renting the land now would like to put fertilizer on because he's determined needs mine. And mining, I asked, what's mining mean? That's putting fertilizer on the land to make it more productive. But to do that, he'd have to have the lease extended. So he puts a fertilizer down this year, it's good for next year. And that gives us the option of, you know, deciding later at a point in time if we want to sell it or not. We did have the surveyor called me today. He is getting the survey done now. We're getting closer. So once the survey's done, we'll get an abstract done out, which should be fairly easy because they only go back forty years. And we've owned the farm for a lot more than forty years. So the question is, do we keep the farm for another year? Honestly, we don't need the money. If we need the money, yeah, let's sell it. But right now, the value of land went up twenty-eight percent this year, and he feels that this land's going to keep going up as development keeps going east on one forty-one. And it already is. You've got West Spring Creek, you've got Prime Peterson doing a development, you've got Murphy, Posner's doing another development. It's all heading east because that's the only place he really go for development. So it's up to the board supervisors to extend it one year. And it's breaking precedence a little bit because normally we bid it out. But this is a situation here, we go one more year. That gives us one more year to figure out what you want to do with the farm.
Yeah.
What would be the disadvantage to bidding it out? I mean, we've, competition drives up price, right? And in terms of fairness, I know we have one bird in the hand, so to speak, right now. But you would assume to have that same person bidding. And from a public scrutiny standpoint, what, what's the problem with bidding it out?
Well, he, you know, if you bid it out, he does not know if he's going to get the cash bid next spring. So he won't put the fertilizer down. I can see his point because you want it down now instead of waiting until spring to do it.
How fast could be?
Fertilizer is going up.
How fast could it be bid? I mean, what are, are?
Well, you can't do it until the end of the year anyway, because he's got, the lease says he's got to December thirty-first. So even if you change, the new person can't come in and fall because there'll be snow by the end of December. And I believe, and Josh may know it better than me, the fertilizer is going to go up. Everything's going up dramatically. So the option is here to get it done.
So I'm kind of eager to jump in here. I think I mentioned this last week, but also in discussions with Dennis when he was putting the agenda item together. I do think from a legal perspective that it needs to be bid out. It's our past practice, but I also think that, while there's not a specific statute that says, that contemplates this, I do think that it needs to be bid out. If the considerations for the board are not those of the tenant, but rather the public interest, it's public land, and anytime that public land is used for a private benefit, the way that you remove any concerns about why it went to one particular person as to someone else is you bid it out and you give everybody a chance to, to use that land for that purpose. The other thing I would note is, the current lease has already been terminated. So basically, what's being asked is that there would be a new lease at the same terms of last year's lease. It's not really a extension because we have to terminate by September first, and that's already been done.
And that's automatically happened by the fact that there was no action otherwise?
There's a special rule for farm tenancies. We have to actually send that out. But I'm assuming we've done that, right, Karen?
So what would the dates of the term of the lease be?
I think the lease is till December thirty-first of this year.
So from January first, twenty twenty-two?
Yes, twenty-one. This current calendar year, the lease ends December thirty-first.
We're in twenty twenty-one, right?
Yes.
You're talking about the new lease?
Right, right.
Yeah.
New lease be January first, December thirty-first of twenty-two, correct?
Typically, we've done a two-year or just one?
We've done.
We've done anywhere from one to three years.
Right.
I'd like to see us sell the thing. That's my, you know, I'm, I'll beat that dead horse at infinitum. But I think at least if we do one year, while we get that potential, what's my thought?
And somehow less valuable if, you know, for our consideration, if it's not mined? Or we don't know?
That I can't answer that, Matthew, on that.
Are you thinking, because it's farming sense, if the ground's already got more nitrogen in it, then yes, it would be worth more than the ground that has less nitrogen in it?
Do we have any update on the timeline of when it could, when all the steps would be done in order to make the determination to sell or not to sell?
I think once the survey's done, the abstract's done, we find auctioneer, deal with that, you know, if you have a minimum bid, things like that. So it'll still take a little time. I don't know if you can get it done by the end of the calendar year, this calendar year or not. Would you have any idea, Josh, how long it takes? If the board decides to sell, how long is it going to take to sell it? I don't think it will happen overnight.
It would be somewhat dependent on the auctioneer and how fast they can do it. But typically, I mean, you announce it and you give people time to put their financing together. And from the time that you announce it, there's maybe thirty days to sixty days. So my guess would be sixty to ninety days would be the fastest if the board decided, you know, next week that they were going to sell it.
But it could go for sale while it's still being leased.
Correct, yeah. If the, the sale, if the sale were to happen next year and we'd already bid out the lease, it would be subject to the lease. The board would also have the option of waiting on putting the bids out. I think that's what we did this year. We actually, I think the lease, the notice for bids went out in March or April. Okay. Late March, early April is when we did it this year. And we still had, we had competitive bids. Prices were trending up at that time, so it actually, I think, helped us a little bit.
So we know that it's, it's, you know, not good to sell in the middle of the winter. If this lease is, if this new lease would be through the end of December, wouldn't we face the same issue with a potential buyer that may want to do something like fertilize the land ahead of, ahead of winter? So that if we did, if we were able to sell it at a date that's earlier than, you know, what would otherwise be the end of the lease, wouldn't that be beneficial to a buyer? Wouldn't that be good for the auction price?
Are you asking me often times to sell?
Yeah, yeah.
What did we decide on that? We kind of decided before late summer, wouldn't it be? I remember we talked about it in the past.
But I mean, as far as an effective date, you know, to take ownership?
Well, it's, it's not unusual for a farm to be sold subject to an existing lease. It's probably a little bit preferable just to, to have it open for the, for that crop year. But it, I mean, there's, an auctioneer or appraiser could best speak to timing of a sale. But, you know, right now, there's a lot of farmland that's being sold at the end of the year. People made money and they're looking for things to put their money into. Whether you'd have that scenario next year or not, it's, you know, each, each year is different. But the fertilizer issue, I mean, there's one type of fertilizer that can be put in, in the fall. You, there's other things you can do in the spring or even throughout the year while the crop is growing. So it's not like a farmer's not going to be able to get the nutrients on the land that they need to. It's just a, a timing issue and maybe a price issue as far as a lot of the inputs are, are going up and people think that's going to continue.
Well, after hearing Mr. Whitman's comments about for the public good, I guess I've changed my mind and think it probably better be bid out again, rebid it.
How soon you want to rebid? Or can we put the notice in by the end of this week? Get it in the paper? It's not a legal notice, just a public notice.
As soon as humanly possible. I'm asking for guidance.
Well, I think that you'd be under the general rule. For public notices, the board puts out that no, either four days or twenty days, no earlier than twenty days before, no later than four days before the hearing, the, the date of the hearing. So as long as it works with the journal.
If we get in next week, I give plenty of time.
Yeah.
And how many days does that have to be posted?
Once.
Huh?
Print it once. And then, I mean, historically, we've given, what, two weeks to get bids in or something like that. There's not a set timeframe in the code.
Can you work with Mr. Whitman on that and get it on next week's agenda?
You know, we used last year, David, I would.
Hearing your sentiments, Mr. Chair, I'd move to bid the county farm for one year, starting January first, twenty twenty-two, through the end of the calendar year.
Second. Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Passes five to zero. Uh, number nine, Sheriff Sheen approved the creation of a warrant clerk to take effect November twenty-nine of this year.
Good afternoon. As I, as I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago, I would be back to discuss the creation or addition of a warrants clerk in the sheriff's office to alleviate some issues that we've had with the Iowa DPS and the FBI who monitors the NCIC system. Just to give you a little background, currently, our, our warrant division is manned by a correctional officer who handles the warrant entries and the warrant validations. When COVID happened, the amount of warrant entries kind of skyrocketed because people weren't going into jail. They were being issued citations. They weren't handling or taking care of those citations and the warrants. The warrant entries then started to increase. Currently, well, I'll give you, I'm not sure exactly what order to go in here. I'll give you a kind of a historical background on the validations and what happened brought us here today. It, it's my understanding that sometime towards the end of twenty nineteen, the beginning of twenty twenty, the Iowa DPS had been contacted by the FBI, again, who administers the NCIC computer system, that the Woodbury County Sheriff's Office, along with several other law enforcement agencies, were falling behind in their warrant validations. We handle approximately a hundred and fifty validations a month. These validations take about an hour on average to, to go through by one of our clerks. So you're looking at basically a full-time position over the course of a month to do this. We've been doing it with one person doing the entries and the validations. The validate, or the, the entries are about two to three hundred a month. So Chief Winger, in twenty, in, in two thousand twenty, started meeting with DPS. There was some ideas that one of the ways to resolve some of the stress for the sheriff's office was that we would no longer be responsible for doing the warrant entries and validations for the Sioux City Police Department. In theory, it was a great idea. Unfortunately, we still account for about eighty-five percent of the warrant, warrants that are being entered and validated. So we were successful in completing that sometime in twenty twenty-one. Is that right, Chief? In early twenty twenty-one, shortly after I had taken office, we were able to kind of transition and hand that off. But it did not have the desired effect that the DPS was hoping for. We continued to be behind in validations. At some point in twenty twenty, they sent some people over here and kind of gave us a little bit of a tongue lashing, I would think would be a nice way of putting it. Is that, is that a fair assessment? And then in early twenty twenty-one, a new DPS chief information officer took over. And by that time, I had, had been sworn in and started meeting with him and Chief Mueller. And then kind of sidebarred with the, the chief information officer, Max Godsey, trying to come up with a solution. And what I did was I authorized overtime. We trained maybe half a dozen people to assist in doing the warrant validation so that we could try to get caught up. We were approximately a thousand behind when we started this process. We were able to kind of scratch the surface a little bit. And then, as luck would have it, one of our full-time deputies was placed on light duty. And she is a former records clerk with the, the city of Sioux City. So she had full NCIC certification already under her belt. And we immediately, under her light duty, we reassigned her to do the warrants full-time, starting, I believe it was around January one. We spent estimated, I think it was around fifteen thousand, twelve thousand dollars in overtime for other people. And then with the full-time deputy for four months, I think that came to about nineteen thousand, if I'm not mistaken. I have it somewhere here in notes. And really, the, the beta test of having the deputy in there full-time showed us that if we had a full-time person doing the validations, we were able to keep up with the validations. The concern with the DPS and what really caught my attention was with these validations, what they are is when a warrant has already been into NCIC, annually, we are required to go through and validate that the information is correct. That's why it takes so much time. Aliases could have changed. The vehicle they drive could have changed. Maybe there's a new flag for officer safety, that they're armed and dangerous. And the problem that the FBI, the concern of the FBI and DPS and, and for me, was that if those validations aren't done in a timely manner and somebody were to get hurt because that information wasn't current or correct, it could fall back potentially on, on the county. And thankfully, by October, we were able to get them caught up because of the overtime and the full-time deputy in that position. However, she's going to be going back to full duty probably in December or January. And we're going to lose that position. And then we'll fall right back to where we were before if we don't get this full-time clerk's position added. So the reason that I would like to, so I, I started working with Melissa to come up with a job description that was then taken to ASME, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but that was approved by ASME, correct. It's a clerk three position. I don't want to misspeak here. Clerk three position, a member of the ASME courthouse employee bargaining unit classified as grade five, steps three through five. It's, it's, it would be a, an approximate impact to the financial budget for next fiscal year moving forward of between sixty-seven thousand five hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred round, rounded numbers. If, if we make it effective November twenty-ninth, that will allow that person to get started, get their feet wet, and be ready to go. By the time the, the full-time deputy falls back to regular duty, they'll be able to just hit the ground running and we won't fall behind. So that's, that's what I'm here. I'm here to ask you to allow us to create this clerk's position. The correctional officer will stay in our warrants division, will continue to do the warrant entries. The new person would do the validations. The, my estimation for this current physical for this current fiscal bu, fiscal budget that we're in, it would be an impact of around 39,375 up to 44,500 for the remainder of this fiscal budget. So that's kind of the, a long story in a nutshell.
So will this cause a budget amendment then Dennis potentially or?
Ask Chad is, do you have money in this budget?
Would you not?
Well, this would be addition, yes.
Would be an additional.
And then be treated as a new employee next year when you do payroll. Well, not really new because first it'll be on board already, but technically it's an increase from this fiscal year to next fiscal year. So you're talking be out of our reserves, which we have, that's what we have reserves for. And then, um, the increase, say the high end of 76,5, probably depends if it's a single family, that makes the difference pretty much between probably the cost there, that that'd be new employee. Now, sometimes they do it through an employee, uh, request form at budget time, but you see the need is probably to get the person on board now and then it wouldn't be an improvement request come budget time, the person's already here. So that's the options you have is follow Chad's recommendation, hire November 29th, or do his improvement request effective July 1st, but then that person won't be on board, won't know basically what we're doing somewhat, I guess.
Well, that means that between, that means in the month of December, January, February, March, April, May, June, we would not be able to do validations because our warrant clerk can't do both. It's just, it's not possible. Um, every other county our size in, in the state of Iowa has between two up to five clerks doing what we're going to have two clerks doing, um, with this roughly around the same number of, of warrant entries and warrant validations. It's just, when the state found out, when they came here and found out that we were having one person do it, they were flabbergasted. They're like, well, no wonder you're, you, you can't do it. You, you can't do that. It's not, it's just not physically possible. Um, the longer warrants, I talked to Shannon Larson, uh, today, some of the longer warrants, if they have multiple aliases or maybe vehicles have changed and things like that, it can take, it can take two or three hours to do one validation. On average, they estimate about an hour. Um, so, you know, my thing is from protecting the county from, you know, God forbid somebody getting hurt because we did not do a validation in a timely manner. And let's say the person had a recent, um, officer safety entry, that they were now considered armed and dangerous and we did not get that put into a validation and somebody in Phoenix, Arizona stops that person on a traffic stop and the officer gets shot because that information wasn't entered by us in a timely manner. I don't want to open ourselves up to any, any type of liability. Um, the other thing with the NCIC is the FBI was, uh, was threatening, uh, us losing our NCIC certification as an organization, which means our deputies wouldn't be able to run plates. The jail wouldn't be able to run people when they come in to find out if they're wanted or not. Everything would have to go through comm center, which when I talked to Glenn and Wendy, that would create an avalanche of a nightmare for, uh, comm center.
Was somebody moved down this position at some point?
Uh, no, I believe it was, uh, there had been a previous clerk that had done that position and then they brought somebody from the jail to, to handle the warrants. Again, this was 2018, 2019?
DPS started checking on the validations at that time. They came stricter on making sure the validations were done at, at that time. In the past, it was just a phone call and they, does the person still have a warrant?
Yes.
Person change his phone number, if you got any gratuities, if he's in a car, new address.
Yeah, I mean, they, they've really tightened the screws on, on what they want. And it, it does all fall back to officer safety and it also falls back to making a false arrest, making sure you got the right person, uh, instead, instead of the wrong person. Uh, and our warrants have just gone crazy. I mean, we, we do 1,200, uh, 1,500 a year new warrants. Now, and that's already the existing.
Today we're at 2,160.
Okay, our average was 1,200, 1,500 for years. So it's just, it's just gone nuts is, is what it has. And he talks about us getting our tongue lashing. Um, I had set up training because I thought it was for a different part of venue of the warrants and I had 30 people in the room to get trained. I was late to the training and I walked in and there were these people from the state chewing on my staff and they had no idea why they're being chewed on because they, they don't do the entry. So I stopped that and I talked to them and I'm like, okay, this is not what I was thinking. And they said, well, you gotta have people doing this. I said, I got one person doing that. And they were, they, well, there you go. And so I did research. Dubuque's got five, Glendale County's got eight. I mean, it's, we were trying to do something with one and paying overtime and all that. We've been, I've been kicking it, kicking it and kicking it. And the state's no longer letting us kick it down the road. They're, they're after us to get this done.
So is there a chance to move something back to?
No. This is, and if we're going to be able to get it done right, we're going to have to add a position. I mean, it's just, it, it is what it is. We were lucky enough, they had given us, I think, 18 to 24 months to get caught up on the warrants and then literally within like 10 days, the, uh, the deputy, uh, was forced to go light duty and we had the full-time person, we were able to get caught up. Otherwise, they, they were concerned that we would not be able to get these caught up in, in 18 to 24 months. Um, and the, uh, Max Godsey was more than willing to write a letter to the board. I can certainly get him to write something. I told him, I said, no, I, I think, uh, if we explain what's going on, uh, you know, I think the board will be understanding of what we're trying to accomplish here. I will tell you that, uh, we do have a long-term plan, uh, with the, with the new, uh, jail that's going to open. When we start looking at, uh, having to add correctional staff for the new jail, one of the things that we will do is we will take that correctional officer that's currently doing the warrant entries, we will put them, we will reassign them back into the jail, which, which will be one less correctional officer we'll have to ask for at that time. And we will then replace them with a clerk, which is a lower paying position. So, I mean, we're trying to look ahead and trying to have as minimal of impact budget-wise as we possibly can. Um, it really just boils down to the, what happened previously is the, uh, the warrants person was able to pick up the phone and call the clerk and say, is this person still wanted? Is it still in the NCIC? Yeah. Okay, good. Thanks. And now that can't happen. They have to go through, and I, I'm, I'm not, you know, I've never done entries or anything like that. They have to go through literally every single line that the person has. And if they have a name that might be hyphenated two or three different ways with six, seven different spellings, it's going to take them an hour and a half to do that entry. We're caught up. It will be dependent on when the gift arrives.
A little blessing.
People have expressed concerns about the facility and how that may lead to issues of safety. So I think it's wise for us to dot every eye and cross everything to make sure that staff are safe and people are being, um, law enforcement is, is being done in a way that's fair and that, where nobody is, um, is being, is being used around. So if this is going to make everybody's, if they need to be safe, it's going to be proper, with proper law enforcement, I think it's a great idea.
What's the latest date, February?
Of what?
Twenty, twenty?
Twenty-two.
Latest date? I'm not sure what you mean.
Like for a start date?
Uh, well ideally it would be, I suppose you could, we could go as late as, uh, the first week of December or the second week of December, whatever that pay period is. This person, I would expect any day is probably going to be going off of, uh, off of light duty and going on, um, I'm not sure what I can really say. That's it. They'll be going,
In light of everything that's been discussed and, and you and I and Chief Winger have talked about, excuse me, some of these issues, uh, over the past couple of months and public safety and officer safety being included, I'm going to move approval for the, for the November 29th because I'd rather be on top of it than behind it.
Thank you. I, I agree with you.
Second?
Motion by DeWitt, second by Wright. Any further questions for the sheriff? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Pass is five zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Item 10, WCICC IT approved to purchase the proposal offered by CTI for the Board of Supervisors Room Audio Video AVI System.
Doug Bach, Network Manager with, at IT. John was out today unexpectedly, asked myself and Andy to, to come down and answer any questions. I personally don't know what you know about this proposal or not, but we'll attempt to answer any questions. Worst case, we could defer it a week if we can't answer your questions satisfactorily. So, um, the new system does reutilize some equipment. I believe the speakers are raised. There is a new box that, uh, new se, secure boxes sits over my Pat's area. It has monitors for each one of you, 14-inch monitor, I believe, that has microphone and audio in it. I think they call it mix minus, so you don't get any feedback on those from your particular microphone. And it also has the capability of voting if you want to use that device for your voting, which is optional to use.
And I don't see the crisis. I don't know why.
Um, is it at the top there?
Uh, no, on the back of mine is, looks like part of the contract.
The base system is 69,003,2986.
Do you have it?
I don't see it.
Yeah, I don't have that on mine.
Here you go.
And I had gone over this with Mr. Malloy. And we'd kind of gone back and forth two or three times and, um, I asked him to propose it as, as shown. Does anybody have it? Some hog got? Yeah, I mean, I asked him to, uh,
I have this.
For the base bid. For the base bid and then the base bid and the ceiling tile but not installed and then that one. And because Kenny, I don't see Kenny, Kenny had mentioned that he's, his staff could probably hang the ceiling tiles. If I remember right, it was around whatever the difference is there, but.
Just with the tiles alone are $8,585.
Okay. And then a little bit of labor for them to install them.
And for the company to install them, it's another 7,280.
But you were saying that Kenny thinks he could do it more?
Well, yeah, I mean, he's got guys here, he can do it. The only, uh, I'm going to back away from the costs for, just for a minute, Matthew, but, uh, we did talk about that this company, CTI, would need roughly 40 hours to install.
That is correct.
Perhaps we could, I mean, should we approve this? They could probably start earlier, one or two days be done so we could have the room.
There was something in there about equipment might be.
12 to 16 weeks.
12, 16 weeks.
Oh, yeah. Right, right, right. So we're, we're looking at three to four months no matter what. Um, but obviously we could either probably have a meeting in the old boardroom or eighth floor or whatever would, would make Mr. Gill happy.
It's not going to be a problem.
So, any other questions or?
Is this coming out of a CIP paid over five years debt service?
Our CIP depends how big it is, whether it go five years or 10 years.
But either way, it's coming out of?
CIP, yes.
So we're looking at a drop ceiling? No, there's, there's something like, like acoustical tiles that would just go down pretty much the center of the room here.
Building services hung acoustic tiles on our walls and, um, I don't doubt they can do it. We don't have them on our ceiling, but maybe they're glued. I, I don't know, but.
So can we go with the one that's not the most expensive by having building services?
I'm not opposed to having building services hanging tiles. I mean, if it saves 7,000 bucks, then.
I would, I would move that, um, paid for through debt service. The, uh, proposal base bid, uh, plus ceiling tile not installed.
And what Kenny's building services director mentioned that he was willing to step up and do that to save the county $7,000. So I will second that. Question then, is there a benefit to doing this now and not waiting as a, uh, improvement request during budget?
Prices are going up.
Prices are going up and it's, and we're already, we're already three to four months before the, before the equipment gets here to install. Yeah. If it's anything like the stuff I gotta wait for, it's three to four months, it's going to be fast. We pay them after they're done, right?
Can you speak to the, uh, in the proposal, there's, you know, recommended additions for extra years of service from the vendor?
I, I know one year comes with it.
Okay.
I know with the equipment we put in for the network, we typically like to see three to five years for support and that's what they're proposing, two and four additional for electronics. It's nice to have that expertise to call upon. I, I think it's probably something you could add after the first year. I, the prices might change, but again, I'm not familiar with that detail of it.
Well, at some point, if you're talking about supportive monitors and those kind of things, you might as well buy a new one for what they charge for a four-year support.
Yeah. And though, I don't know if those monitors are specific though. I mean, if they're touchscreen, microphone, audio, they may not just be a staple's purchase.
Well, it looks like they install programs that have real-time tracking and things like that. Is it, I mean, do you have, do you guys have a recommendation one way or the other? Do you think a year is enough time to get to know the system with the support they have?
For most of our electronics, we put them three to five year. And then a lot of times it's, they're due for replacement. By that time that five years is over, you know, this type of system might last longer. Um, we try to lean towards the support, but I, I, I didn't give my proposal away. I don't even know how much that is.
6,500 annually?
I know John leans towards those support contracts usually, but.
He told me he was looking for things to do and then he wanted to take it on, but.
But then again, we have an Andy, so.
Then again, what?
I'm, I'm surprised I don't see it in his proposal. So that's where I'm a little bit hesitant to say, let's do it. Cause typically John is, let's put it in there.
I don't, I don't recall talking to him about that either. So I, that might've been a last minute thing. But we have Andy.
What I'm, what I'm seeing on the recommended description is two additional years CTI complete service agreement for 6,500. So that was my reference to the 6,500.
Right.
Can we do a year? We get a year free, right?
Right.
And then, uh, I don't think there's anything prohibitive from extending that by two years should we deem that we need. We had so many times that we needed to utilize their expertise during that first year that it would make sense. Otherwise, maybe it's pretty simple and user-friendly and we don't think that it's worth, the juice is worth the squeeze.
Yeah. I know what you're saying. I, I, you mean like buy the extra years later in the contract if we want?
Correct. In other words, you have this year to determine how many times did we even call them? And maybe it was very minimal versus, you know, uh, going with two or four years right now.
The only slightly positive negative is the price might escalate a little bit, but it's a $6,500. What's, what's it going to go up maybe a few hundred dollars maybe?
Right.
And it is an Iowa company.
So my personal, uh, to hold off on additional service agreements until we find out what it's like the first year.
Is this something that would qualify for COVID funds since we're responding to issues, having remote meetings and those kind of things, calling?
Let's say potential. Cause they're changing this COVID all around. We got new legislation Because they're changing this COVID all around, they got new legislation going through this country, especially with our jail.
I've been on the bad end of a telephone call into these meetings. I've tried to view them on YouTube. It's poor, it's a poor experience. $70,000 to get this room set up so it runs more effectively seems like a lot of money. Can I say that without really any knowledge of the industry? That's a lot of money to get this room running right so that YouTube works for the three people that watch and for the supervisor that calls in sick. It's just, I don't know.
That's kind of my feeling, is it quite a bit to pay for something that happens pretty rarely?
But there's more, my understanding, there's more to the proposal than that, right? There's audio enhancement of the microphones, documents that can be put in front of people who can be shared for all of us at the same time, plus not having to turn around?
Yeah.
So just so it's not just, that's the only thing?
That's true. The new, I think, 85-inch TV, the voting monitor, speaker, microphones all in front of you, a new control box, and they are reutilizing the speakers, I believe, but raising them up to have a better sound.
I mean, if it was just for us, it would be too expensive, but it's not. Most of the improvements are for the public who asks for them after every meeting they try to watch or listen to. So I think it's appropriate. It's a long-term, will keep on benefiting the county for years. This is why we're considering it, as we've all been contacted by people that have watched our meetings and couldn't even hear us. And so...
This also includes a couple cameras as well. I don't think I mentioned that. One in the front and back, which I think are new, you can control them better, I believe, Zoom, don't hold me on that, but it's a better video as well.
Oh, and the calling, you mentioned, if more than two people want to call in right now, good luck. So it is, it is a good thing to be able to screen calls, allow them in the proper order as recognized by the chair and different things like that, rather than having just to kind of, you know, we're texting them, call back when this person gets off. And I mean, that's a real thing we have to deal with when people want to call in, especially if you have a vendor that needs to talk to us and needs to be public record. You don't want them to be unable to hear us or reach us, so...
So I do have one other concern too, is the vendor that does this, are they gonna follow any kind of guidelines as far as doing this in an historical building? You know, one thing I always hate is, you know, retroactive additions of technology and like wires are just, you know, that is sort of most attractive.
Do you know if they were specifically been told this is the, you know, the historical? You may have walked through them with them down here.
I don't, I don't specifically know if they've been told that, but they do have pretty good references from the Iowa court systems. I mean, they're a professional outfit, so I would, you know, assume that their cable management would be, you know, good enough to hide the cables and such.
Better than we have under the rug over here?
Well, I mean, that was, that was a response to COVID, to span the system for better or worse, but yeah, and you know, maybe clean up, see cables now, so...
And if this is the vendor that worked with the court system, then my understanding is they did one of the courtrooms upstairs.
That's correct.
There's a lot of new technology in the one in the north, whatever corner is, this up here.
So we've got a track record of having done this in this court?
Yeah, I think in our office, it's been happy with how the technology has worked.
Has been or?
Has been, yes, to this point at least.
Somebody else hasn't used the technology?
There was some training provided, I believe.
Are you clear on the motion, sir?
Uh, no, not really.
So, lest my motion die. It's the second one that would be for up to $77,000. It's essentially the system without the labor for the installation of ceiling tiles.
Okay.
It was 77, 915, 26, base bid plus ceiling tile, whatever that ends up being.
Have we identified the funding source?
Debt service, CIP, unless COVID funds are...
They changed the court system, video, everything up there in response to the pandemic. Yeah, I thought that's what you said.
Some of it was.
Right, but CIP probably, yes, sure will be.
It has been a constant complaint about the audio quality.
And the audio, the longer the meeting goes, which this one's getting lengthy, by the way, but the longer a meeting goes, the longer the audio gets behind, or the longer the video gets behind the audio.
So will we still be using these kind of packs? Okay, then I'm definitely...
That's all you care about.
Right. Once again, reiterating my motion.
My question whether or not the hardware is gonna address that problem. That lag, do you know, is that probably getting fixed by this year?
Yes, it will.
We've got nowhere to go but...
Absolutely.
Save a thousand dollars a year in batteries.
I think this is a great step forward in transparency, accessibility, and just accountability, so...
You have a second?
Yes, we have a second.
Any other questions?
Did we get any other potential bids?
We got four, didn't we?
And did we select based off quality or price, or what were?
All of it.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion passes four to one, Mr. Wright opposed. And any of this signed? Or I can sign it in the morning? Never mind, I'll sign it now. Thank you. Secretary Rhodes, approval resolution establishing weight limits on the listed county bridges.
2021 bridge inspections have been completed, and in the course of those inspections, we had 10 bridges that were recommended for reduced loading. One recommended to be closed until replaced. We had a second bridge, it's P6, it's on 220th Street, just west of the Moville Blacktop. It was also recommended for closure unless a repair could be done. It was a very simple repair, the cap was sliding off of the piling on the east abutment. We were able to get Dixon Construction to do that. They gave us a $2,500 quote. That bridge can now remain in service for the foreseeable three to five years, so that buys us a little more time on that structure. But I recommend the weight limits be adjusted on the 10 bridges as shown here. Bridge M299, which was recommended for closure, we've done preliminary design on that, it can be a box culvert, we found with hydraulic analysis. So next week, you'll be getting a resolution to advance it into this year's program. We can find enough money to make that one renewed within this fiscal year, so...
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Taylor, second by Young. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero. B, award bids for the Oak Ridge Park Project to Holly Brown Construction for $66,078.
We analyzed the bids, found no errors, and recommend awarding the low bid for the project to Holly Brown.
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
I'll grab it, thank you.
C, award the quotes for semi tractor trucks to High State and Freightliner.
We went out for quotations on new semi tractor, whoops, top's getting moved, on semi tractor trucks and used trucks meeting the same specification from all of our local truck dealers. We need four semi tractors to haul the four gravel trailers we purchased as part of making our gravel road improvement program work. New truck tractors were running in the neighborhood of $112,000, meeting our spec. We were able to secure bids on some suitable used units that we can have right away. The new truck tractors, we were told it would be second or third quarter 2022 delivery. We'll have these four before the, before December and can actually do some of our stockpiling the gravel for maintenance this year and make sure everything's working well for us, so... We had to chase over part of the Midwest, that's why I missed the board meeting two weeks ago. We were in Madison, Wisconsin, looking at a couple of these. We found one up in Minneapolis. There were two, there were, there were actually four in Sioux City, at Sioux City Truck and Trailer. I wasn't sure, I wanted to buy all four. They're called an automated manual, where the operator doesn't have to do any clutching to shift the, you know, basically there's an electronic clutch that does all the shifts for the truck. We don't have a lot of performance data on how will those work, so I didn't want to stake everything on all four of those being purchased. The other two, the Freightliner, the two Freightliners are both manual transmissions, which is tried and true technologies.
So I'd move to award the quotes for semi tractor trailers, semi tractor trucks to High State and Freightliner?
Motion by Taylor, second by DeWitt. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Passes five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 12, Board of Supervisors, approval of contract land staff, the name of the company, to survey the county farm. This has to do with getting permission to survey the property for the CO2 pipeline. I'm basically opposed to letting a pipeline run through our county property. I think that, I was on the phone with the gentleman and asked why they don't go through the right-of-way. His comment was, one, the right-of-way doesn't always work well for them because of everything else that's buried in the right-of-way. It is a, in some places, it's a 100, well, I'm getting ahead of myself on that, but the map that goes through here is not included, runs pretty much straight through the center on one of the lot lines, north and south through the county farm. And if that pipeline did go in there, we would be disallowed from building anything over that. And if it, for 50-foot right-of-way and further, if we did allow the pipeline to go through there, if they said that was the best place to do it, I think that would damage the value of our land, should we decide to sell it. But he did say that it's 48 inches from the top of the soil to the top of the pipe, so it's buried four feet deep. I am not inclined to offer approval to give them survey permission through our property.
So this was requested by that company?
Yes.
Do we know how many other sites they're looking at? I mean, would it help to definitively rule this out if we know that there's other areas that would...
In conversations that I've been, I mean, as far as other folks' land, or, there have been a lot of letters sent out asking for permission. I believe that's why you're here, ma'am. Is your name Carol?
Yes.
Good. In fact, could you come up to the podium, please, and tell us your name and address and explain what you've, what you've been through as a private landowner?
My name is Carol Hennings. I live at 1970 Garner Avenue, Moville, Iowa. My husband and I, a year ago, bought a farm just on the outskirts of Sioux City, and it is on the south side of Highway 20. It already has high line wires that go over it, plus a pipeline. We received a couple of registered letters stating that they were interested in putting another pipeline through there. Well, we're not in favor of that. We're not in favor of that at all. It already has a fossil fuel pipeline going through it. Plus, my husband, last year, did extensive tiling to get rid of the wet spots. So they have that also that they're going to have to, you know, consider. I have talked to many of my farmers, I talked to them, and they were gonna be here today, but they're trying to beat the rain, they're trying to get their crops in. The CO2 pipelines that are proposed across the land owned by Woodbury County and privately owned lands of Woodbury County. I object to the move for the, or to this move for the following reasons. The land is owned by Woodbury County and other landowners, especially farmers within our county, which means that we, the taxpayers of Woodbury County, own this land. We as taxpayers need to have input as to what is proposed for this property and our properties. We are the owners and caretakers of this land and should have the right to manage the land and its use as we see fit. We have been told by the CO2 companies that if we do not voluntarily sign the agreement to let the Summit Carbon Solutions surveyors onto the land to take soil samples and stake out the pipeline, that they will get an easement, that they can take the assessment by condemnation and eminent domain. Now, what I'm trying to say is the easement that goes through it. They can take that by condemnation and eminent domain. They have been at our house, our particular home, three times, trying to pressure us into signing to give them permission just to go on the land and do this. We told them no, and we told them no three times. First of all, the crops are still, they're not out. And they said, well, we'll, we'll pay for all the damage. No, this is our land and we have a right to manage it as we see fit. Summit Solutions is a for-profit privately owned company that has spent large amounts of private monies and corporate investors. The Iowa Board of Utilities has been given the power to grant eminent domain to a private company if the, this is a quote, "pipeline services to be rendered will promote the public convenience and necessity and is an affirmative finding to that effect is a condition precedent to granting of a permit," unquote. Where in the law is the listing for the criteria that would show that it meets all of those I have yet to find it, and I've done a lot of research. It is neither a necessity nor a convenience for the county or the landowners and farmers of Woodbury County. What the pipeline will do is it will reduce the value of your land, plus take, make the management of the land more difficult, if not possible, for future development and use. There is a farmer, he's from up north... There is a farmer, he's from up north, and I don't know which county. But he said that he was involved with a pipeline and it literally ruined the value of his property. He was, I talked to Mr. Genery and he did come to the Plymouth County Board meeting. And he, he, he told, you know, you've ruined my land. You will not answer back to me. They had a inspector that was on the land and when he, when he was also there, the owner was also there. And when he said, there's a problem here, this needs to be fixed and this needs to be fixed before you should proceed. They wrote it down, they reported it, but never fixed it. He is still trying to contact the pipeline.
Mrs. Hennings, I think we're getting just a little bit ahead. I, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're acting as if the pipeline is going to be going through and we're strictly looking today for whether or not to give permission for this company to survey the county ground. So are there any questions from the board or guidance from Mr. Woodman?
Well, I think from the county standpoint, there's no obligation to give permission to do the survey, especially if it's something that we don't, we aren't necessarily in favor of going through there. It's a little bit more complicated when, if a private entity or a governmental entity tries to use eminent domain against another governmental entity. So i- if it came to that, it would be an interesting question as to whether they could force it to be through that land or not. But yeah, I don't see any reason if it's, if you do allow the survey, they're one step closer to putting it there. So I don't see why, I don't see any benefit to giving permission.
I'm not comfortable doing anything on it today other than moving on. I mean, I don't think we need a motion, right? We don't need a motion to disapprove. I think we're just, without better information and.
No, it works for me. Then no motion taken? Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
I'm sure they'll be contacting me or, and going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hennings.
By the way, wait a minute, there is one more comment I want to make.
Okay.
There is another pipeline that is coming. It is called Navigator. The meeting is, the first meeting is going to be in La Mar's November twenty-ninth. And here in Woodbury County on the thirtieth, at the Sioux City Convention Center. I would really like to see at least one person from the board come and attend that meeting to bring information back and ask questions at that meeting when the owners will be there and also the I U B.
Thank you. Our reports on committee meetings.
I'll start. I had one with a ship and it was a, excuse me, I gotta sneeze now. No, no, I don't. With our director to discuss the potential for future liaison to ship from the County Board of Supervisors. As in next June, I will be termed out. I have to not be on it anymore. So just so you guys know, that's up for grabs next June. So maybe when whoever's next chair is wants to divvy that out, one of you four guys could be lucky enough to get that position.
And your next report?
I just knew you guys would all be excited for that one first, so.
Ecstatic.
That's, that's, you leaned forward, I think it's going to be. Lean it back now.
Mr. Taylor? Nothing? Mr. Wright? Mr. Young?
No.
Item, round two of citizen concerns. Anything that anybody would like to speak of that is not on the agenda? Board concerns.
A question from Mark, because you seem like he probably know the answer to this. Who's an expert on these pipelines? Who do we need to reach out to to understand these issues more fully?
I reached out to the Iowa Utilities Board last week and was going to prepare a report for the board. I didn't realize you had an item on the agenda for this week, or I would have worked on it over the weekend, but the board is still, or the Iowa Utilities Board is still accepting comments on these CO2 pipelines. They sent me in quite a bit of information on the type of deliberations that they do to determine whether or not this is in the public interest and even putting it in place. I should have a report prepared for you folks to take a look at. Based on the comments I got from Mr. Boyd at the Iowa Utilities Board, this isn't a surefire pipeline yet. One of my questions to him is why do we need two that are running essentially within spitting distance of each other? The second one for Navigator, the hearing will be on November thirtieth, is right down at, comes right by the Neil Four Power Plant, which is just about two miles south of where the other one's crossing the river. And it seems like, do we really need duplicate pipelines for competition of this type? So I'm trying to collect that information for the board to update you. The board did take action, I think this is before Supervisor Taylor came back to select an inspector for the summit pipeline if it does come through. There's a lot of water to go under the bridge between now and then, before they made that determination. They have not been granted eminent domain yet, but they are allowed to negotiate with landowners, which is the information that was shared here, that they are beginning to contact our people and they contacted the board as well.
Thank you. Anybody else? We are adjourned.